You're right.
Okay, and Larry, I'm happy to get together with you since this is your first one. Uh, it's tomorrow, Friday, whenever, if you want to sit down and go through these documents. Uh, with the fine soup and I'm happy to walk you through them.
Thank you.
All right, we are streaming.
Okay, and Larry, I'm happy to get together with you since this is your first one. Uh, it's tomorrow, Friday, whenever, if you want to sit down and go through these documents. Uh, with the fine soup and I'm happy to walk you through them.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, I took a copy of the document. The Declaration of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. We'll just go ahead and do roll call. Deb?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Megan?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented or amended?
No.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda as presented. Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
All right, on to the consent agenda.
I reviewed the claims this afternoon and they all matched up.
The water main on Park, is that taken care of now?
Yeah, well, we have to change that.
Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion second to approve this consent agenda. Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
All right, update for the city initiator.
All right, I have two updates. I'll start with the bad news and then we'll go to the good news. Um, we have been extensively promoting the pool as hiring. I'm sure you've seen the ads on Facebook and the promotions. Uh, it's been published over at Starmont, it's been shared to several groups, and so far we only have three applicants. Uh, to put this in the perspective, we need 12 applicants to open full-time, and we're going to need at least eight applicants to open part-time. So, uh, please, if you see these, keep sharing, keep encouraging people to, uh, to join, uh, or to put in an application. You know, we have upped the hourly rate to be very competitive. Um, still, we're getting a lot of like, "Yeah, I don't want to do that kind of work," you know. So, um, yeah, if those of you have kids or friends, you know, with kids, please encourage them to, uh, to step up and get it done. Uh, on to the good news. The, uh, as you probably saw, we shared the missing strawberry poster online. Uh, it went viral, it was really cool. So, um, as of right now, we're sitting at 193,000 views on that post. Uh, it was shared 217 times. Uh, 34,000 people engaged with it, meaning they liked it, shared it, commented, did something on it, and, uh, so far, we've already raised $1,000 toward the restoration process. And we've had donations come in as far as Colorado and, uh, like, all over the place. So, um, yeah, so really, really happy about that. Uh, those are the two announcements. Oh, the, the third was, uh, the electrical outage. Uh, we still have absolutely no idea why that happened. Um, still looking into it. It was off and then it was on, and just haven't really heard anything. So, uh, when we do get some news, I'll make sure to share it with you.
Can you remind everybody the age for the pool?
It's a six...
You have to be 15 to get certified. You have to be 15. Perfect. Thank you.
And we do reimburse for the certification.
Yep. All right. Any other questions? Now, we'll go to new business, number seven. Resolution 2511 authorizing the purchase of a new pumper truck from Toyn, Incorporated, and directing the city administrator execute the apparatus purchase agreement. One second. All right, motion second to discuss.
Okay, so, um, we've been talking about this pumper truck for a very long time. Um, you know, I've been to, uh, the fire station, I've looked at the pumper truck myself, and certainly, you know, expert in pumper trucks. Uh, but there, I did see some, uh, serious wear, and some serious concern on many of the parts. Um, this is a, a very expensive truck, and we're getting near the period where the truck would have to get re-estimated out for a price. Um, at the end of this month, there, they won't guarantee the price that's posted in here anymore, so I wanted to make sure to get it, uh, on an agenda now before they have to re-estimate that price. Um, while it is a very, um, you know, serious capital purchase, it has no budgetary impact this year or next year. Um, it can take about two and a half years for the truck to get delivered. Uh, I do believe it's in the city's best interest to buy this truck. Um, Toyn is a, a Iowa corporation, it's a very high-quality truck. Um, we've had extensive conversations with the fire chief and, and many in the fire departments about it, and so I feel like it's a, a really good investment, and, uh, we ought to seriously consider it. And so, tonight, because it's new and it is a big expenditure, um, we have members of the fire department who are here who can answer any questions. Uh, there's a schematic of the pumper truck in your packet, and there's also a very, very thick, um, uh, a full packet of information on the fire truck. If you want to geek out over details about the fire truck, I could email it to you, but it was like, I don't know, 60-something pages, I didn't want to waste all that paper, uh, for, you know, if you're not interested. Um, so that's where we're at. I'm happy to answer any questions. We've got the fire chief, a member of the fire department here who can also answer questions.
I'd like to know if the fire department's going to do fundraiser, their fundraisers is going to go towards helping the purchase of this truck, like we did with the pool.
As of right now, um, the IFA basically states it, uh, is required by the, the city to provide a pump truck. We've been pretty much purchasing all the other vehicles or helping pay for them. As a fire department, we feel that that is something that the city needs to provide. Um, donation-wise, I mean, you do have the $20,000 you may have listed, we were going to put towards that as a donation, so, I mean, you basically go without from there.
Um, okay, so the $10,000 contingency, can you explain what that is?
That is, uh, something built in so it's safe. The aluminum goes up so much, that kind of covers the, that gives you your buffer.
Okay.
That could come off the end, and we could use it too.
Okay. My main question is, how are we going to pay for this, even, even in two years' time?
Yeah, so the, the way that we're going to pay for this, um, is obviously a capital purchase like this would, would go to a bond, and it would be, the way that I would structure it, it would be to stretch out the bond over the, um, the life of the vehicle, meaning, and not, not the actual useful life, but, uh, how long we can get a warranty on it. So, basically, if we make a purchase and we go to bond, I want to make sure that we don't have a single expense on that truck in terms of repair or whatever, uh, throughout the life of the bond, because we don't want to pay repairs on top of debt service. So, um, as you all remember from last week, we have a lot of debt coming off of the city rolls, about $100,000 a year that we've been paying in debt for a long time. Uh, this is the final year on that debt obligation, it's in, we talked about that later as well. Um, and to put a truck of this magnitude, uh, if we can save up a couple of years to put a decent down payment on it, um, it will add probably $40,000 to $50,000 a year in debt service, uh, over the useful life of the truck. So, um, it's, it is a major purchase, and paying down debt is always difficult and challenging. Uh, but the theory of going to a bond for it is that the useful, or the people who will get the use out of the truck pay for it over the lifetime of the truck. You know, it would be really untenable to save up this kind of money, because inflation's just killing savings, and, uh, you know, it would just be better to, to spread it out. So, uh, when we do purchase the truck, our first payment, um, is not even due, uh, until the delivery of the truck, and during that time, we can shop. Um, we have a, a, an existing offer on the table for financing at a really good rate, uh, but I also think in two and a half years, we're going to see rates fluctuate, we can wait and really get a great deal. Uh, we can also go to the bank and see if, you know, there's a, a way that they would, uh, finance it themselves, and, and they've been very generous in the past with donations toward the principal, so, uh, we have time to explore those options and time to get a really good interest rate, so, um, the commitment now is to get it so that they can order the chassis, get the chassis, start building the truck, and there are many time now, it's like 290 days or so.
Is this, that truck, when I toured the fire department, the truck being that you referred, log station, you were showing me the gauges were broken in?
Mm-hmm. The parts rusted out, so the lock will be in there. So, it's a small point each, so you gotta get, well, you guys are calling, they're mainly in the gage. Every second counts when you're pulling up to a fire scene, so...
Well, and just taking mind of the area of safety, you're, too, I mean, with you guys climbing over there, too. So, I know Dean, when I also toured, we talked a lot about, like, the vehicles that you guys get them from different places and you have to return them. Where did this truck?
This truck, we could possibly use the chassis for another tanker, or we could, I don't know if they would even trade it in, but we would probably, we could put it for, up for sale.
Sure.
So, I mean, that's something that we could sell, that could go towards, uh, the new truck, too.
Okay.
But we need to be able to sell that until...
Right.
Maybe not.
Right.
Yeah, in the hand.
Right, sure.
Mayor?
Yeah?
Um, when you speak of a bond issue, just to clarify my own mind, this is not a public bond issue that would be voted down by the public, is it?
It could. We could structure it in a number of different ways. We could do a general obligation bond, which would require a referendum, uh, or we could do, you know, a debt certificate with the local bank that would not have to go to a referendum. So, we have a lot of different options, and, uh, and we would explore all those options and summarize them and put them on a future, uh, you know, on a future board meeting.
So, that ultimately, the council then would approve, well, under certain circumstances, if it wasn't a public bond issue, the council would approve, and...
Correct.
...satisfy the issue.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, so today, today is the, is the making the commitment that we're going to, uh, get the truck in 300 days from now when it's ready, and then, um, you know, probably right after budget season, we'll start researching all the different funding opportunities for it, uh, including grants, you know, like, we haven't really had enough time to explore if there's grants available for this type of thing. Uh, once we adopt a budget, you know, that'll free up a whole bunch of my time to be able to search for grants and other funding options.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, so we will go ahead and go to vote. Larry?
Hi.
Megan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
All right, number nine, motion to discuss the new Starbury Point annual budget.
Great. Okay, so, um, I didn't have time to make it pretty yet, but you have the budget book in front of you. Uh, this will be bound and, and a little prettier with a nice cover on it for your next meeting, but I just want to walk you through the options. Um, the top page is a, um, a summary of the budget, which I'll go over in a minute. Um, the next section is the revenue section, um, which basically, um, breaks down all the different inroads for revenues, you know, taxes, uh, enterprise funds, so on and so forth. The next section is the expenditures, that's the thicker one, it's always thicker, right, expenditures. Um, and, uh, and then the third is the debt amortization table, um, and as we just talked about in the, the fire truck discussion, you can see in this fiscal year '26 is the, the last year of a, a pretty heavy debt load, uh, and it steps down, um, you know, in, in subsequent years. And then, um, the fourth section is the, uh, the fund balance. So, these are all of the current funds and the latest fund balance as of about 30 days ago. Um, and then the final section is the capital improvement plan, which is basically every capital plan that, that we've been working on, um, and working off of to pull projects into the budget. So, um, everything that could bring money in and everything that could take money out is reflected in one of these line items. This is a ton of information. I've, uh, much to, um, a couple of suggestions, I've taken a lot of the line items that have zeros, uh, just completely out of the budget, I've just hidden them. Uh, I left a couple in there because I think we might have to pop a small number in, um, you know, before we adopt the budget, so, um, this is a, a ton to, to get through. I'm happy to carve out and, any amount of time that's needed with any council members who want to come in and go through these things line by line. Um, I also have department heads here tonight, if there's any specific questions about any particular department, um, they're here and ready to answer those questions. And then, the most compelling is the, the summary document on the top, which basically says, "We're looking at a, um, projected revenues of about 3.4 million, total projected expenditures 3.9 million," which leaves about a $537,000 deficit. Um, and some of the key drivers for that deficit are the loss of speed camera revenue, that's going to be, you know, $100,000 to $200,000 lost. Uh, we have a net cost to keep the pool open, that's about $250,000. That includes all of the upgrades that we need at the pool, uh, you know, new pumps, and that includes, uh, bathrooms over there, new bathrooms that we talked about in the capital improvement plan. Um, we also have, uh, CIP projects, we've got the Park Avenue paving, which is, you know, probably going to be a little bit more than $100,000. Uh, the front hall here at City Hall is kind of bending inward and becoming unsafe, uh, and then, um, a restroom or two at Inger Park. So, those are kind of the key drivers. Um, and then the big question is, how do we come up with $540,000 in deficit? Uh, the good news is, we have a lot of fund balance, uh, to bring forward. Uh, so the Munter Trust is going to, um, you know, give us about $22,000 to put towards , uh, CIP projects. Uh, the library capital improvement fund balance has ample, uh, reserves there for their portion of the tuck-toining project at the Civic Center and at the library. Uh, the swimming pool fund balance has $5,000 if we can put toward the, the repairs and upgrades there. Uh, the Civic Center has a fund balance of about $30,000, which we can apply toward the CIP projects, um, the tuck-toining, and, uh, then we have, um, uh, we've got Parks' Equipment Reserve, uh, we can put about $20,000, uh, towards park improvements on the CIP with that. Uh, we have a road use fund balance, um, that's, uh, we can use about $100,000 toward the CIP projects. Uh, I would suggest that we, um, raise the base rate for the electric to be a little bit more competitive with, uh, everybody else in selling electricity. Uh, if we raise that base rate to $26, I would raise about another 80, maybe a little bit more, but on the conservative side, another $80,000 a year, um, and we would still be $14 below what everybody else is charging for a base rate. Um, we take $50,000 from the general fund balance, uh, and then, um, we have a ton of money in the electric reserves. I don't want to take a lot of it, but inflation is eating that money up like crazy, you know, it's been building for years and years and years, but after so many years of inflation, it's like, not, doesn't have the buying power we'd like it to have. So, what I would like to do is, uh, take about $110,000 from the electric reserve. Uh, that balance right now is like 1.25 million, so it'd be a very small little dent, and then in a future meeting, maybe right after budget season, you're going to get a resolution from me asking to invest the rest of the money in, you know, guaranteed insured investments, but at least get something a little bit better than, than bank interest on, you know, on that amount. We could do like a CD ladder, so we, we're only tying up a portion of the money for three, six, nine, and 12 months, and, um, do it in a very safe way to make sure that we're getting, you know, not getting beat up by inflation. And then, uh, the remaining $100,000, I would suggest maybe, you know, depending on if there are savings to be had on any of these projects, because, you know, we do aim high, our revenue, or our revenue projections are conservative, our expenditure projections are very liberal, so much like the water tower, if there's savings to be made, this $100,000 that we might have to borrow could, you know, significantly reduce or even go down to zero if we can save money on, on other projects. So, um, that's how I propose that we get to a balanced budget. Um, and obviously, it, it does spend down a lot of the, um, money that we've been saving up for these capital projects, but at the same time, you know, these things are really necessary if we want to meet the goals that we set out, uh, a few meetings ago, and have the amenities that, that are going to, to draw people here and have families want to come and live here. So, um, that's where I'm at. Happy to answer any questions, and like I said, department heads are, are, uh, also willing and able to answer any questions, um, about their departments.
Um, where are you proposing transferring the 110 from the electric to?
Don't know exactly yet. We, we, I mean, it would end up, it would just be a transfer into the general fund, and then I...
Okay. But I thought we were always told they couldn't do that. I thought it hadn't stayed within the electric.
I'm pretty sure you can do it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we can do it.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I mean, they can't, you know, like, the state can make a lot of recommendations on what we can do with our money, but like, imagine that we have this fund and never have an expenditure for it, like, they can't force us to just bank the money. So, we'll figure out how to get it done, but I'm pretty certain they, they can't mandate that we, that we just pour money, um, that we're not going to necessarily use anytime soon. Um, but I'll, I'll work on the legalities of that and figure out the best way to go forward. But the thought was, I, I don't want to necessarily draw wire diagrams of like, this money's going from here to this project per se, just in case that project changes.
Right.
I'd rather say, transfer it into, you know, the general fund and then use it where, where needed. Um, and it's, again, like, as some of these projects come to fruition, we don't know that the deficit's going to be that bad, you know, like, there are savings, and really what I want is the latitude to, you know, be able to move the money around as needed, but not be so rigid at the beginning of the budget season, because things are going to change that we don't know about yet.
Mayor?
Yeah?
1.25 million in the electric reserves?
Yes.
We're paying electric bills, and over the years, that's accumulated in reserves that large.
Right, so we're, we're buying and selling electricity, so we're, we're, as you know, we're our own electricity provider, or not, I shouldn't say provider, we're a reseller of electricity. Um, and we've been building up that fund, and Eric could probably give you a better synopsis, but basically, we have a gen plant, uh, a gen, you know, a generation plant that is a million-dollar-plus project, um, and it's currently working and it's currently in good shape, but at some point, it won't be. And so, we've been sort of banking this money to, um, be able to have some funds to operate there if there's an emergency or if we need to replace a, a big engine. Also, we have expenses, you know, we have our own electric grid, and so, you know, if something catastrophic were to happen, like, we need to have cash on hand to be able to, to handle that and contract that one needed. Eric, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, for that million dollars, in one bad storm, that...
Yeah, I know, I did that.
Yeah. That's why I, I really don't want to touch it very much, and I want to, you know, get that balance invested in a CD ladder so that, you know, we can get, you know, because right now, that, that 1.2 million, with the buying power that we've lost with inflation over the last year or four years, and the likely coming inflation because of the trade wars that are currently going on, um, that 1.2 is going to have a buying power of about $600,000 or $700,000 when, when all of a sudden stops, so...
Does that switch your, get put into this year's budget plan for the general plan?
Um, yes. Yes.
The $350,000, that's already paid in?
I believe so, yeah. I'd have to, I'd have to look at that line item, but yeah, we talked about putting that in.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then the other thing, too, I, so next week, we have our, our, um, tax levy hearing. Um, that, again, is just the worst-case scenario of tax levy. Uh, we can change it after that hearing, but we can only reduce the numbers, we can't increase the numbers. Um, but that doesn't affect the budget per se. We have until the end of April to pass a budget, so, uh, just, you know, I, I know it seems later in the year than how, how we've typically done it, but the state has, like, moved all of the deadlines and, you know, and getting it closer to the end of the fiscal year, I think helps municipalities to, uh, estimate how much their fund balances are going to be, which is really hard to do in January, because you're only halfway through the year, so, uh, we have plenty of time to go through this, we have plenty of time to, um, refine it if need be.
Approving this budget is not giving a yes to all of these, is it?
Well, we're not, no, 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 so that, and we're not even approving, we're just discussing the budget plan.
Correct.
Yeah, the, the CIP is strictly an internal planning document, but it's really important that city council members know what's in that planning so that...
Correct.
You know, you can see, like, there, you're not going to get surprised with, I mean, obviously, if there's an emergency, you'll get surprised, but, um, if, if we come up with a plan, or we see something that needs fixing, it'll go on the capital improvement plan, which will be a live digital document on the website as well, and so it can get updated in real time. So, there's no need to approve the capital improvement plan, because every single one of those line items has to come in front of you as a resolution anyway.
And the timeline is an estimated budget.
Estimated, exactly. Yep.
Mayor?
Yeah?
Yeah? Are there, are there anything, is there anything that, given the fact that we're, things are changing, obviously, we're, uh, that should be in the budget now but isn't, that you think, given the way the world is, and we're the 21st century now, and we're losing population according to statistics, that's not a help either, but is there anything that other communities might be doing that you know, or like in Platte County here, or anything else that we're, that we might have to take a look at at some point, that you think, given the circumstances of...
Yeah.
...that we have to think about again?
Sure, and thanks for that question. I, I think that, you know, as you know, I come from a really large municipality with a $200 million budget, has its own problems, but like, what we found there is that if, if all of our solutions...
Approving this budget is not giving a yes to all of these, is it?
Well, we're not, no, 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 so that, and we're not even approving, we're just discussing the budget plan.
Correct.
The CIP is strictly an internal planning document. But it's really important that city council members know what's in that planning so that, you know, you can see, like, you're not going to get surprised with, I mean, obviously if there's an emergency, you'll get surprised, but if, if we come up with a plan or if we see something that needs fixing, it'll go on the capital improvement plan, which will be a live digital document on the website as well. And so it can get updated in real time. So there's no need to approve the capital improvement plan because every single one of those line items has to come in front of you as a resolution anyway.
And the timeline is an estimated budget.
Estimated, exactly. Yep.
Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Are there anything, is there anything that, given the fact that we're, things are changing, obviously, we're, that should be in the budget now but isn't, that you think, given the way the world is and we're at the 21st century now and we're losing population according to statistics, that's not a help either, but is there anything that other communities might be doing that you know of, or like in Plank County here, or anything else that we're, we might have to take a look at at some point that you think, given the circumstances of town, that we have to think about again?
Sure, and thanks for that question. I, I think that, you know, as you know, I come from a really large municipality with a $200 million budget, has its own problems. But like, what we found there is that if, all of our solutions come with population.
Right.
If our population grows to where it once was, a lot of our problems get solved. Our problems get exacerbated with a diminishing population. So the one thing we absolutely have to do is make sure that we're not chasing people out of town. And, and then the other thing is, we need to make sure that we have a community that is attractive to people who want to move here and raise a family. And as we discussed a couple of meetings before you were elected, we talked about setting goals and having the types of amenities that, that people would want for a family, pool included, nice parks, you know, public safety, which, you know, includes good roads, good police, good fire department. You know, everything working together to, you know, create a harmonious city is what will draw people. If we have problems, if we have high crime, if we don't have, you know, decent coverage for ambulance and fire, people aren't going to want to live here. And, you know, and that, I don't think that these things are controversial or even debatable, right? Like, this is pretty evident, evidential. So, so that, that's the basis of what we need to be doing. Second, we need to start looking, you know, at using technology a little bit more. We've been using a lot of technology inside City Hall, we've automated a lot of processes. You know, we've put like garbage complaints online, a lot of things we're automating. We're keeping track of all of our contracts using, you know, a database now that, you know, can help us keep a good timeline to make sure that contracts are getting renewed on time. All of these things are going to make us more efficient because as some of these prices go up, we're going to have to inevitably spend more time on collections and, you know, helping people to stay on top of their, you know, utility bills and stuff like that. So we have to shift as a staff to the needs of the constituency. And in order for us to have the efficiency to do that, we need to continue using technology in City Hall. And then outside of that, I don't know, it's probably a much bigger conversation about more out-of-the-box things that you might be referring to, but I'm happy to have those discussions with you at any time.
Is this issue regarding the traffic cameras, has that been explored?
Yes.
In other ways? Because I know that cha, I mean, there's a legislature at least, isn't there, that could change that?
Yeah, so we put in an appeal. So they, they, the legislature had a lot of pushback from municipalities like ours, and they opened it up and had an appeal process. So we put in a very compelling appeal, using statistics from the camera on the south side of town over here. Luckily, the company kept the cameras rolling, it wasn't issuing citations. But from the month before and the month after we stopped issuing citations, we were able to collect very compelling data that gave us an incredibly strong appeal. So we are waiting to hear back. Full disclosure, you know, the state asked about the other cameras on the west side of town. Those cameras did not draw as much of a compelling conclusion, so we didn't use data from those cameras to make our case. And we told the state, it's not an all or nothing with us. If you want to approve two of the cameras, we'll use them on the south side of town, and we'll get rid of the cameras on the, on the west side of town or not reinstall them. So we're waiting to hear back from them and hopefully we'll have a good result. And if we do, that will, you know, that one camera alone would probably generate 80,000 to 90,000, maybe a little bit more annually, which would help us to cover some of this deficit.
When do you expect the response?
Soon. They told us that about three months and we put, we put the, we put the appeal in, I don't know, we put that about a month and a half ago?
I was going to say between a month and two months.
Yeah, so we should hear back in the next month. And the state knows that we're all in the budget process, so having a, just having a yes or no is, is very important. Yeah, so hopefully soon. Thank you.
Can you clarify for me the, on the debt service schedule? The police cruiser, does that mean we're paying that off this fiscal year? Is that why that didn't appear?
Let me pull up the. All right. So the police cruiser, yes, this 48131, that will be paid off in, in the fiscal year that we're in right now.
Yeah, okay.
So we have no fiscal implication for that next year.
Okay.
Yeah. It might have been paid this fiscal year. Yeah, so we, you think it was paid off in '24? But is it '24, '25?
I think so, I thought it had been paid off.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Sure.
So you had mentioned that you'd gotten a call that there was police cars that could be ordered or that was in, and that was on this year's budget. Is that being?
Yeah, that's, that's, our plan is still to order that this, this fiscal year, and we have the funding in the budget already for that.
Right.
So that, that'll likely show up on a resolution in the coming weeks.
Okay.
We're looking into some grants. And so there are grants available, Brandon's been looking into them, and those grants might have a purchase requirement of a certain date. So if we can get the grants, but we need to push the purchase out into the next fiscal year, we'll do that.
Because we can just move the money if it's been.
Exactly. We can just push it, push it forward, but I don't want to give up that grant money if it's available. You know, if we have to make our truck work for another six months, we can find a way to make it work. It'll clunk around and, you know, it might not look or sound good, but, you know, we don't want to throw away any grant money. Yeah, Brandon, do you have anything to add on this?
Yeah, we have one reserved, I talked to Sova just the other day, we still have the car reserved.
Okay.
But obviously, if we push it off, we're probably going to be in line, be among the back to wait for our clinics list, so. They've been, probably been good with it as far as like holding on to them, but I think he said that they had three rest, and we were one of them, so, on that. Yeah, as far as looking at the equipment, I got the list all done, it's just finishing up that night's stuff. We're doing some, I was working with Tony today, putting some EMT, you know, we're just together with, upfitting with the equipment for the EMT stuff too, so kind of putting that in with it. A lot of, a lot of the parts, but I think we're pretty much at the on stretch with it.
Okay.
And Eric, are our equipment doing okay? Is it worse than everything?
No.
It's been a few years since.
Yeah.
Okay. Because it's helped, when we started purchasing these new vehicles, to have.
I have it in my capital improvement to start turning it on in the next few years.
Okay.
We need to get like on a rotation, you know, so like, run it one year, so like, yeah. Offset everything.
That's exactly the purpose of the capital improvement plan, is to get every and all needs on that plan and then we can move them around like chess pieces was needed.
Any other questions, comments?
No, I don't think it's.
I know, honestly, I'm brained in. I was having dreams last night, dollar signs with commas and.
It kicked me out of some home, basically, I go back to the computer.
Yeah.
A budget hearing in next Wednesday, correct?
Correct. And again, that's only for the, for the.
Lefty.
Yep. Yep. And that'll, that'll be the only thing on the agenda.
Sure.
Like that, now the state mandates that that has to be a standard.
I'd separate it, yep.
Yep. So we will really appreciate your six minutes of service.
Yeah. That is about what it took too.
Okay, anything else on the budget?
I think Mayor needs, right?
All right, if not, we'll move on to other business.
There's nothing? No other business.
No. Dean was pretty trained in, so we're not going to talk about anything else.
Motion for adjournment? All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Well, I think the stuff we got tonight is the most updated, so, yep.